At seven o'clock, we might call a meeting in the board of selectmen's quarter, the first item of business is the pledge of allegiance. Sarah, would you like to lead us?
I move to approve the Board of Selectmen's special meeting minutes from November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
All members of the board are here and present. Next item is the approval of the meeting minutes from November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, that were in your distribution. Are there, is there a motion or are there any corrections?
I move to approve the Board of Selectmen's special meeting minutes from November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Sir, a second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Any corrections? Motion has been made and seconded. Hearing no, no corrections, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Our special meeting from Tuesday, November twenty-first.
Move to approve the Board of Selectmen's special meeting minutes from November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion or corrections?
Um, just a spelling error, but because of the nature of the spelling error, it's on the, you know, on page two, under new business by. Uh, so what's been is called wrong. But this for clarification, so there need to be.
Any other corrections? On the minutes as amended, will you say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry it. Public participation, this is one of two opportunities for members of the public to address the Board of Selectmen. I'll first ask if there's anybody here in the room who would like to address the board and ask that you identify or tell by your name and your address and then state your business. And then I will provide the same opportunity for anybody who has joined us online. Um, is there anybody here in the room who would like to address the Board of Select? Yes, sir, name and address, please.
Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street, Robbrook. When I did, you and I had a little discussion about public access, the information. Uh, I'm thinking about this, I'm gonna suggest to the board that every department have identical methods of storing information so that it's consistent. And if necessary, bring in a professional to train people to do it one way. We've got departments doing things different ways and it makes it difficult for the public to access information. Not a good idea. So it would be much better if everybody did information storage one way, so that everybody knew how to find what they're looking for. Thank you. You're very welcome.
Other, other comments for members of the public, anybody here in the room? There anybody online who would like to address the members of the Board of Selectmen? If so, please unmute yourself, state your name and address, and state your business. Seeing that, there will be another opportunity later in the meeting. We're gonna move on now to seven C. Sarah?
I move to postpone the, um, appointment of Courtney, I'm gonna say this wrong, Kataja. So the Arts and Culture Committee has a regular member for a term expiring October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Sir, a second.
Um, yes, so, um, the Arts and Culture Committee, our committee currently has all Democrats and unaffiliateds with one vacant spot. And unfortunately, it cannot be a Democrat. And I think Courtney would be a wonderful addition to the board, but unfortunately, there's one vacant spot and there's zero Republicans on there, so for minority representation purposes, it cannot be a Democrat. Which I don't necessarily agree with for this committee, because I think she'd be an excellent fit, but I, that's where it is currently.
Right. Further discussion, yes?
If she, um, if she converted to unaffiliated, then I think she'd be able to join if she chose to do that, because the minority representation doesn't require Republican, it just says you can have a super majority of Democrats, so maybe someone could reach out to her and, and tell her that would be an option if she wanted to, please, think about that.
I don't. But I don't agree with that. You're.
I don't agree either.
But that's my fault.
Discussion on the motion. Motion is on postponement, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Um, okay. Next, uh, we have some special guests here tonight, um, and I think I'm like to. Um, uh, this is the third year that I've had the opportunity to work with graduate students from Westfield State University's Masters of Public Administration Program in their organizational behavior course. This year, Melissa Maltesi and I worked with them jointly. Um, I first introduced the, uh, professor who runs the MPA program, Dr. Charles DiStefano is with us, doctor, thank you for being here. Um, and then I've had the opportunity to work with these folks over the last twelve or fourteen weeks. Um, guys, I'm gonna ask you to introduce yourselves, talk about what your area of focus is in the MPA program. And then the floor is yours to jump into the, um, presentationals you, as you see back. Who would like to go first?
I'm in, I am a graduating student at Most Good State University.
Well, I'm definitely not.
Alright. I have a focus in, uh, a relation, uh, community relations outreach and have been a novice in political research. Been on and off of this for a while, I'm glad to be here today.
What's your concentration on here, PA?
Um, healthcare concentration.
Excuse me, Jason, I missed his name.
Chris Wyman?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristen Owens, I'm a student in the MPA program and my concentration is nonprofit management. Um, my focus in this project was the interviews of the folks here in the town of East Windsor and some of the employees as well.
Hi, my name is Arianna Williams, uh, my focus is healthcare as well, and my focus in this project was on emphasis on public health and reducing health disparities. Yeah.
Um, my name is Shans Lacher and I'm a C A student and my focus is interviewing and blogging. Uh, I've been found and my concentration is healthcare administration.
My name is Dan Himmel. I, uh, was involved mostly with the literature review portion of this project and I'm in public management's concentration.
Matt Peter, uh, my concentration is criminal justice and, uh, in this project, I kind of helped out with odds and ends, did a lot of editing and did some of the background research for the literature.
Isan, you wanna, uh, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, my name is, uh, San Azizi. Uh, my concentration is, uh, healthcare mani- administration and I work for the Kering Health Center for, and the project I was working with Chris on the financial side of the project.
Alright. So who would like to start off?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jason, Board of Selectmen and residents. As you just heard, we are graduate students from the Public Administration Program at Westfield State University. And part of that program, we were asked by First Selectman Jason Bowza and Melissa Maltesi uh, to conduct an academic analysis of the feasibility of consolidating three town departments. The Senior Services Department, Social Services, and Parks and Recreation. As graduate student investigators, we bring a diverse educational and professional experience to this study. We have professional backgrounds in social services, public health, park management, law enforcement, banking, and more. Our research was overseen by Assistant Professor Charles DiStefano uh, from Westfield State's Political Science Department and Director of the MPA Program. You know, as such, we bring a unique academic objective and outside perspective to this project. As mentioned, this analysis examines the feasibility of consolidating senior services, social services, and parks and recreation. These three departments are currently overseen by a single director. Melissa Maltesi, East Windsor's Director of Recreation and Community Services. And much of the consolidation has already occurred under Director Maltesi. What remains would be a financial or budgetary consolidation. Moving all three departments into the same building and formalizing the consolidation as a new, uh, Department of Community Services. Uh, as a, as a Department of Community Services, each of these departments can become one of three new divisions, a division of Senior Services, Social Services, and Parks and Recreation. The idea of this would allow for financial and administrative efficiency. The consult consolidation process can vary in complexity. And generally involves several stages or steps ranging from informal discussions to planning, formal cooperation, a trial period, and final legal consolidation, and it's typically followed by ongoing evaluation after the consolidation takes place. There are several factors to take into consideration when examining a consolidation such as this. And our study looked into these factors. And the other speakers will discuss, um, what makes consolidations that even fail. Uh, political implications, budgetary and financial implications. Interviews and focus groups examining potential indications for employees, community members, and, um, equity disparity, as well as our findings to date. Our final report, um, is forthcoming. It will contain more detailed information and will be completed and available, uh, by the end of the semester, which would be before the end of this month.
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to touch on a few hot points of the literature, just like Dan mentioned. Um, the report's nearing completion, you all have an ability to read it over. Uh, I don't want to go over every single source we had, but just a couple of high points. Uh, certain level of overlap is inevitable as public agencies evolve. Um, there's admittedly limited literature on municipal consolidation for towns the size of East Windsor. Um, especially intra-municipal consult, uh, consolidations uh, for towns this size. We know that they have occurred. Um, they just have not been very well researched and published, uh, in a lot of available literature, unlike larger scale mergers, like you hear about public safety agencies, police and fire, school districts merging. Um, those, those tend to be the, the more typical, uh, types of sources that are out there. Uh, it was noted, uh, that mergers within, uh, local communities tend to be less complex than the aforementioned, uh, kind of consolidations. Such as a city, county, or city and city. Municipal consolidations were generally said to increase efficiency, um, and local, in local government, although they do require careful management. Uh, there was just a quick example, um. There was one merger of two county-level probation departments that I had read about. Uh, the biggest issue with them was they suffered from mutual distrust of employees. Um, and there were historical disputes ranging back years. Uh, this was resolved through, uh, dispute resolution and, uh, management training. Uh, and overall cohesion was improved and the merger was considered a success, and again, for more details, it's, it's all gonna be available in the, uh, final report. Uh, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but East Windsor does not seem, from what we gathered, to suffer from those same types of interdepartmental tensions. Uh, it does strive for better service delivery. Um, so we view the lessons here as applicable, uh, and similar con- consolidation would allow administrative tasks to be performed in a more streamlined manner, uh, in line with the findings there. Um, another item of note was that employee stakeholders uh, need to be in support for successful consolidations to occur. Uh, and a lack thereof can directly, uh, directly affect the success, uh, of these kinds of undertakings. Uh, political implications, uh, surrounding consolidations are ever-present. Uh, these kinds of realities and constraints need to be taken into account, uh, when these things are considered. Um, another, uh, an example of this was there was a merger, uh, in Michigan of, uh, mental health and medical services. Uh, and this was said to be, in this case, completed quickly, because the governor at the time had a very broad support, uh, from constituents, uh, and a more junior politician with less political capital may have, uh, complicated the endeavor and it was thought that it may have been, uh, stuck in committees or, or due to, or legislative sessions, that, that sort of thing, so. Political capital and having already existing support is very, very important. Um, and for that reasons, plans were, were expedited and, and lanky pitfalls were avoided. And this sort of momentum, uh, can contribute to the overall success of, of consolidations. Uh, and lastly, the last point I wanted to touch on was that there needs to be agency compatibility prior to the merger. Uh, particularly in their missions, uh, of what they, uh, what they seek to achieve. Um, and I'll end on public's, public sector, uh, consolidations were, uh, legitimized by constituents, uh, they serve by the constituents they serve and the ensuing, uh, plans around their operation need to be supported, um, by the public, members of the public that they serve. Thank you. And next, the Isan, if he, uh, is able to speak and zoom in from his computer.
Yeah, so, um, hello, everyone, uh, what we were so I was not feeling well, that's why I couldn't attend, uh, in person. Uh, so on the financial aspect of the report, uh, we, we got, uh, three other towns similar to East Windsor for comparing their, uh, their demographic and geographic, uh, stand. Where we, uh, we touched on the, the three men, uh, uh, heads or GLs, which is the I'm sorry. The parks and recreation, senior services and social services. Where from them, the park and the recreation is the revenue-based, uh, hmm, uh, uh, GL or head we have under the budgets. Uh, we have, uh, for the, for other municipalities similar to the same, we have, uh, Granby, Tallent, and, uh, Windsor Locks. Uh, from them, uh, we already have, uh, uh, these neighboring municipalities which are comparable, uh, in terms of their demographics and geog- geographics, when, when it comes to their, uh, human or community services, we have East Windsor of a hundred, it's a hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine. Green beer, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand. While we have their population, uh, as East Windsor, why we are comparing them is the East Windsor has the population of eleven thousand, three hundred and Tallent, but fifteen thousand and fifteen thousand and fifty-two, and Windsor Lock is twelve thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two. Uh, for their parks and recreation, uh, we have East Windsor is the exact figures of two hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-five, and uh, Green B is larger, uh, but we have Tallent is ninety-seven thousand, which is smaller, and the Windsor Lock is eight hundred and one thousand. So for the, uh, based on these, uh, uh, figures from all of the, from, from three other towns comparing to East Windsor, we have the, uh, the preliminary findings which are the uh, these departments, uh, are already shared professionally, including and while if we go for a potential merger of the financial, uh, part of the report, we will have the some cost cutting for the administration, for the administrative cost which will come down under one GL. Uh, I, I have, uh, uh, next, Chris, uh, next to explain the remaining part of the, the, uh, financial findings. Thank you.
Uh, just to clarify and elaborate. Um, much of what we found with East Windsor is not very unique within the area, much of it kind of quite similar. Most of them have evidence that they have done similar consolidations in their past. Again, these are not often written about, but they're quite overtly present through the, the naming and titles of, of these departments. We expect no serious change, maybe some minor uh, cost savings through efficiencies and personnel management. But we are effectively just taking eggs from one basket and moving into another. As is as it currently stands, we find no reason to not move forward in, financially. And we shall move on to the interviews for constituent and employee opinion.
Evening, everyone, um, as I said before, my name is Kristen Owens and I was tasked with doing some interviews with folks here in the town, um, some town residents as well, some town employees. Um, Shams here will go over the town employees' interviews, I'll go over the constituents. Um, I did interview three residents here, um, one that lives on near Skinner Road and two from your Park Hill, um, Housing Authority area. Um, some of the findings thus far, um, services are concise and effective here in, uh, the town of East Windsor, they are very easily accessible. Um, one predominant, um, message that I did get from all of the interviews is that Jason, Jason himself is an effective leader and is very involved in the community services and I feel he is very accessible, um, and again, in white. Um, town employees, um, are solution-based and offer guidance in the right direction, if they don't have the answer, they find somebody that does. Um, town employees are, uh, always open to find the solution for anybody that's asking for one. With some frustration surrounding services, um, that were mentioned for those young people that fall on the autism spectrum or other cognitive development diagnosis, they would like to see more, um, services around those young people. Um, the general consensus, because my, uh, focus group with the town constituents were as a focus group model, I'm just getting the general answers from them. Services under one building, um, if they were under the scout building would be, um, exceptionally helpful for those that have women in transportation, as one of the things that I know that Ari will discuss. Um, is that rideshare option for minimal here in the town of East Windsor. Um, so under one roof, they would be able to kind of have one-stop shop that they can, if they have social services and senior services and park and rec needs, they can all meet those needs in your one umbrella. It is very clear that those who utilize one service will often use more than one of those services, so having one building would be very effective for them. Um, one of the other pieces that they found was missing was that those parks and rec offerings are not easily accessible if they don't have transportation, so if they're offered on one side of the town, it is hard for them to get to the other side of the town, though not a large town, it's still, the transportation, if they don't have it, is rather complicated. Um, one thing that they were excited to see if, uh, everything was brought under one umbrella and more specifically one building, is that they would be able to see more crossover between senior activities and parking rec activities, um, just because they would all be under one, um, one building. Um, and that was it so far that I have gathered from our interviews from the town constituents here, so Shams will talk at any points.
Hello, everyone. Uh, so based on the interview, we looked with two employees for the town, um, that they totally supported their address, especially that most of the programs is offered online. And they're saying that they don't have a word of the, all programs that are offered by the senior center or by the park and recreation or the city at all. And also, they said, um, that, uh, that especially where the limited transportation, sometimes they feel unhappy when moving from a department to other department to, um, finish the application they started or the services they need. Also, um, they mentioned that if they be under one rule, they will be able to share resources. They can work all together, uh, to provide services, they can provide further training for the, uh, elderly and the seniors to use the applications online, the programs offer online, and they can utilize more programs, uh, to their senior and the elderly under the same umbrella. Thank you.
Um, I was inclined to look at this particular area of public health lens. Um, and consolidating for reasons of reducing health disparities um, is not, that research is very limited and context-specific. Uh, but there are some evidence-based models that I think, uh, could be included, or it could be a lens for um, for consolidation, so looking at this consolidation through a public um, the, the model that I found the most information on was a integrated services model. Um, and within the consolidation, integrating the services and, uh, the overlap between what could be offered for seniors, um, what could be offered for social services and what parks and recs could do uh, for seniors or for mental health and wellbeing, um, so there's a lot of overlap in services and that if, during the consolidation, if there are cost savings, those can be reinvented or reinvested into, um, health promotion. Um, and a good example that I found was, uh, parks and recrea- recreation services can contribute to physical and mental health wellbeing while social services get a broader determinants of health. And that integrated approach may help address health disparities. Um, other factors that came up are reducing barriers to service utilization, uh, which also came up in the interviews with Kristen, um, reducing those barriers to getting to the services like transportation. Um, and, uh, improving access and outreach, so, um, often when different programs are consolidated, I found a lot of examples of consolidating public health programs in specific. Uh, this just allowed for a bigger bandwidth or capacity for workers to go out and, and engage with their community. Um, and the residents did, the constituents did, uh, express that you know, staff are already very helpful, very resourceful, um, and are and when they're called on, you know, they're very, they're, they're helpful. Uh, but this would maybe allow staff to go out more into the community and to, to focus more on health promotion activities. Um, and that, that just leads to a more holistic health approach, uh, throughout parks and recreation, social services, and senior services. Um, and I think I was initially drawn to look at this through a public health lens because of the growing, uh, enlarged senior population here. Um, and the needs of that senior population and how that will change over time.
As for our findings, uh, we believe that the town should continue down this path. However, at this time, we are unsure as to how to proceed. We've run into some, uh, questions of law and, you know, accounting that none of us are, none of our background or training is able to answer. At this current stage with our preliminary findings, we do not have the we're, we're, we're searching a full spectrum of possible options. But we just be in the realm of future research. All in all, uh, we believe there's a strong ability for this town to continue, drawing incentive from both the public and employees. And matters of finance are, are rather well, they don't speak against it, but it don't say much of anything in favor of it either. It's a more of a wash. As far as oversight, which was a raised concern, these will these issues remain, uh, line items underneath the consolidated budget, feels most likely see something similar to the budget and then the departments. Furthermore, we do, from what we understand, these individual programs are voted on quite frequently and appear in the minutes that, in which they are voted on. Providing opportunities for the public to chime in or ask their selectmen about any issues they have. That's a bit, it, it for our presentation, I'm not quite sure where to go from here.
Are you guys comfortable if we ask if, uh, any members of the board have any questions?
Yes, um, I think the best way to do this would be for whoever it has the pertinent answer to just stand and speak.
Perfect. Yeah. Anybody have any questions for the students from Westfield? I'll just start off by, uh, and I ensured this with Doctor DiStefano privately earlier, this is the third time I've worked with, uh, organizational behavior students and you guys are by far the most balanced group in terms of distribution of the work, there was um, from my perspective, meeting with you guys once a week for the semester, there had, did not seem to be one particular person who was carrying all of the workload, or one particular person who wasn't doing their share, you guys seemed to work really well from a synergy perspective, and I think that that, um, kudos to you for that, that doesn't always happen. Questions or comments from members of the board?
Will we be seeing the final report, or is that an option?
Once it's granted.
Yeah.
Definitely so, I, if I, I can answer that, uh, when we Jason and I way before the semester began, started discussing this and, uh, for all our committee partners, we make sure that partner gets to report, so they're not done today.
Right.
The feedback they get from everybody else will help them with that report. The feedback they get from everybody else will help them with that report. And I stopped to grade them. I'm not gonna give them a grade, sorry. And so I believe not just it's good enough a class, but it's good enough to be presented to you.
Great.
So you will definitely have that report. It'll be open to share with whoever is interested in reading it.
I'll, I'll include it as a communication when I get.
Great, thank you.
Right. Um, I'm not sure if it's question or if it's comment, um, but on the next issue, uh, reaching out into the community. Is your report going to be in a little bit more detail with maybe a recommendation that you had in mind? Um, because you seem a little vague to me, um. Oh, no, it's, it's okay. It can get real wordy if it wasn't vague, I understand that.
Yeah.
But in the final report, um, could you elaborate a little bit and maybe if you have a suggestion from. Your standpoint and the research you've done and the training that you've had, I think that would be helpful.
Oh, absolutely. I think I can elaborate more on the integrated services model and how it can be a intricate part of the consolidation process.
I appreciate it. I don't mean to give you more work.
So it's very now, they're still going through the data, so they wanted to give you something.
Yeah.
Uh, but it will be a lot more flushed out by the time the final paper comes out.
Hold on. Thank you all for the work that you put forth, um. And, and hoping because it's always important to have an outsider looking in, um, to review things that we're hoping to do down in the future. So, um, thank you for that.
You know, I'm just a little curious about the access to public health, inequities, disparities, um, we all touched on that a little bit. I'm just maybe in your report, a little curious about small towns like East Windsor versus larger communities. And what you've observed here, you find that, um, that small, small towns have a better opportunity to serve the public. In terms of overcoming disparities and health inequities, or the small towns have larger barriers. And I don't want to say the reason why, but I'm kind of curious to, to get some feedback about that.
You can certainly do some research into that and it, from my, my experience, it varies.
So if you look at published research, there is a bias for large organizations and large cities. Um, which is one of the reasons I really love doing these projects that we get to work with those smaller. Uh, communities and be able to help them with research.
Small towns have, have issues with drugs and alcohol and uh, has sometimes have a larger impact. And you're specifically looking at access to programming.
Yes.
Healthcare, so.
And preventative care instead of tertiary care dealing with the issue after it's already sprouted and, you know, trying to do that preventative, give it preventative. Attitude and um, approach to, to the public health work that you guys are doing in town. So we, we don't have those issues.
Oh, really interesting. Yeah, thank you. You guys had mentioned a couple of times, uh, that you look at some legal aspects and certainly. We don't wanna, I'm not a dear lawyer, thankfully, but I, are there, uh. Specific legal questions that you did look at that you're gonna include in the report and not, not that you would, you know, go into great depth. But are you talking about union contracts or, you know, what are the, what are those points that you, that you found?
I know one of them was uh, revising the charter. And that might actually not be necessary if all that's being consolidated is, is a budget. Um, but I know that was one of the things we were kind of harping on was, um, the actual.
Titles and.
Yeah, exactly. And I know that it can be a lengthy process. It's difficult and that relates, um, that's what you're gonna say something.
Uh, I was gonna say, think of that back. Um, we're also currently kind of investigating the actual process of. How to organize the actual items as far as the accountants are concerned. A little bit beyond our scope, but uh, we are, we have kind of considered that off item.
It's something on my brain a minute little bit, if it is beyond the scope of the project. So the focus would be on, is this feasible? The notes and bolts on how to do it, you have attorneys, you have accountants who are much. More able for lack of a word to be able to guide them in that way.
Other questions or comments?
I do want, also want to thank and recognize Melissa who gave up uh, her time on Monday nights to, to, to join the group as we were zooming in. So she's here to support us. Thank you guys very much for a great job. I look forward to reading the paper.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stick around if you'd like, um, or we can, but you have the rest here. We're gonna be here all night. Actually, uh, can we take just a five minute break?
Yeah.
All right, uh, can I have a, a motion to go into recess at seven thirty-five? All in favor? All right, at seven thirty-nine, I'll call the meeting of the board of selectmen back to order. Um, we are, oh, is Amy here? Where did Amy go? Amy, Melissa, can you grab Amy? She's up for the next two ten please.
All right, at seven forty, we are back. Um, our next two items involve the finance director, Amy O'Toole. Um, first and foremost, um, we've been approached by Park Hill. To serve as the fiscal sponsor for their Greater Together Community Grant, something we've done in the past. Um, all of the other recipients that have not been to us so far, correct me when I get this wrong. Uh, all of the recipients that have not been to us so far are county agencies that don't need the financial sponsorship because they fall under our umbrella. And is that correct?
The only two that needed them were American teaching and Park Hill.
Okay.
And uh, Park Hill, this will be the third time they've actually come through for a grant that we had needed this to sponsor for.
Okay, and do we know what the, what Park Hill uh, is doing with their project?
They're getting technology.
Yep, okay.
And something about wellness, um, being able to straight online classes instructor for fitness.
Um, so the, is the will of the board to serve as a fiscal sponsor for the housing authority as well?
Yes.
Yes, so I need a motion to do that.
Make a motion for the town of East Windsor to serve as a fiscal sponsor to, for Park Hill for their greater together. East Windsor greater together, great.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favors?
I know.
Oppose? Okay, um, next up we have the um, budget letter and the budget calendar. Um, I think probably for convenience sake, what I'll do is start with the calendar. Um, and I put together a preliminary draft of consideration, um, this, and this follows last year's schedule pretty much to the T. You'll notice the green box in the right hand column about halfway down the sheet. Um, those were the dates that we used last year. They don't correspond with leap year and the change of, you know, what they fall down one day of the week. Um, they don't correspond the same, but I wanted to keep a snapshot for when we put our workshops. Um, Sarah, I know that's a busy time of year for you, so I wanted to be considerate of that, um. Is, is that same general timing or the dates that are presented here that are within our control? Um, everybody good with that?
Fifteenth is Thursday.
Yeah, and it's a meeting day.
So that works. And then we got Friday, Saturday. Well, that's maybe not great.
Yeah. Are there days of the week that are better or not? I, I cannot do Tuesdays. So could we do the, uh, is the ninth a holiday? Could we do the, the twenty-first and the twenty-second? Any objections?
No, I'm good with that.
That's good. That gives us two.
Twenty-first is gonna be your board of finance meeting. So I can't be a bowler.
Yeah. Yeah, so maybe we do the twenty, the fifteen, the twenty-second. About that. Twenty-eight and twenty-nine?
Maybe the nineteenth to the twenty. There is none actually.
We could always start earlier, couldn't we? Before board of finance if needed or.
I can start as early as you want. Um, that's not a concern for me. I, I just, I know you have a work commitment. I don't know what Alan and Keith have on.
Yes, what do we got now? Fifteenth so far we've done?
Fifteen, yeah. Was there an issue with the twenty-second?
No, I'm good on the twenty-second.
Okay. Fifteenth, twenty-second, probably need two more dates. Twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth? Okay. Any other changes or um, concerns with the proposed uh, budget calendar is presented? All right, can I have a motion to accept the calendar as amended?
I'll make a motion that we accept the fiscal year twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five calendar for, um, budget.
Then we didn't set times, right?
Um, no, I, is there, I was, well, I mean, we can start at uh, five, if we start at five thirty on the third days. That gives us time where staff is not on, um, overtime or downtime. Can, is five thirty doable?
Yeah.
Can we start all of them at five thirty?
Sure.
And the motion hasn't been?
Second to motion? Because I don't think it was second.
All in favor?
I am.
Okay. So now we need to get on to the, um, the budget guidelines. So what I did, uh, is I took last year's. Um, budget document, our budget guidelines document, I incorporated feedback from the board of finance at their uh, November meeting into this. But you guys all need to be on board with, with the contents of this as well. So are there, are there, uh. Philosophical points that we want to change here? Do we like the general direction of this? I'm not, I'm not married to any of this. I just wanted to get something that is a working document. Go ahead.
Um, I'm not sure if there's our constituents do not expect government to solve all the problems, but they expect government to understand their problem. I'm not sure why that's.
Was last year?
Yeah.
I can, I can tell.
Um, and then on the second to the last paragraph, um, first we're, we're indicating that it's, um. I hear it says expenses for the town and then we ended with saying, um. We appreciate with your British mission and expected for any new spending proposals. We hope there wouldn't be any new spending proposals if we're looking to reduce expenses. So that seems contradictory to me.
So it's, um, it's to say that ideas of, of saving revenue other places are going to be required if there are new spending. So basically, if you want to increase your supply line by a thousand dollars, your travel line's gotta come down a bit. But I'll take it out of your one.
Anybody have an opinion? Did anybody read it differently than I interpreted it?
I'm good with it.
You're good with that?
I'm good with it the way it is.
All right, what else?
I know in the past, there's been questions, been concerns of people that are. Not getting enough money to cover audit expenses. And I don't see that we've clarified it here.
It's a charter issue and as, uh, so they can get, the charter provides for a waiver to be issued, although it's not terribly clear as to by whom. Um, I think it's by the board of finance, um, or the requirement of the fiscal audit for outside agencies.
That's a concern. Because why would you come to the common one, get fifty thousand dollars and be going to watch twenty-five thousand dollars to get an audit? And that's been a problem in the past with a couple of offside. So I just, I don't know where we go to fix that. I. It's gotta remain in there because it's the audit, um. But.
I think the brother library is the only, um, place we really have an issue because we only give them twenty-five thousand and they're audit to profit at least back. So it doesn't make a lot of sense to ask that. So they just need to come for a waiver.
Yeah, has they, when they got a waiver before?
I think.
Never.
We've definitely discussed it.
We discussed it, never.
We have discussed it and that's why I'm asking for clarification because it's never been addressed.
Never been, certainly can be, so. Yeah, we can do what it takes.
That's a good one to add, the charter change. Maybe we just raise the value of what somebody has to, if they're getting fifty thousand dollars and maybe even an audit versus.
Fifteen?
Fifty. Increase the threshold.
And I don't even know if we can do that.
I think in charter change is probably good.
Any organization receiving funds from the town not included in the town audit shall cause an annual audit of its financial condition to be conducted by a certified public. Accountant licensed in the state of Connecticut. We shall submit the results of said audit to the board of finance prior to submission of said organization's budget request for the upcoming year. Notwithstanding the foregoing, board of selectmen is authorized to establish rules for the exemption of organizations from the audit requirement. Based upon the financial capacity of the recipient organization to conduct an audit. So.
So you guys ran the waiver.
Right. I wouldn't take it out. I would have them ask for a week.
And make everybody else where you get audited from. And I filed them with the town board. So anybody who wants to see it, you go to the town board and get it.
Other comments, constructive criticism, edits? Ready? All right, so I'm striking the, uh, one seconds, one sentence, second paragraph, and that's it. That's all the changes that I have. Can I have that as a motion, please?
Make a motion, um, that we accept the, um, part and portion of the reserve in the town. Uh, budget letter to exclude, um, the second paragraph.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Oppose? Uh, okay, so I am required to make assignments for liaison assignments. Um, these are substantially similar to the ones that we've had in the past. Um, if anybody wants to request any changes, please let me know. Good.
Anything?
Kate?
I was hoping for her. The, um.
That's Marie.
And uh, she's also the East Windsor Housing Authority?
She is. Sorry, I missed that last thing you said.
I said it is what it is and I'm not gonna, somebody else has gotta step off for, for something more substantial.
Okay.
I mean, I think the, like, ones I have are really not substantial. Boards or assignments that are really, they're really, you know, they're not, they're important, but they're not the most important. But it is what it is. It's okay.
All right.
You want to take the water pollution control authority?
No, I'm gonna attend meetings anyway. I'll be going to those. I've been going to a lot of meetings anyway, so that's all we do. I don't have to be at the ASH to go to the meetings. It's okay.
Um, I'd ask that we, uh, table agenda item E. And F until after our executive session.
I'll move to table agenda item A, B, and F until after executive session.
You're a second. All in favor?
I.
Oppose? All right, um, so we have the, um. Well, these are, I should do this in a different order, but we have the annual town meeting coming up at the end of the month. And there's a couple of pro forma pieces of business that we need to put. well, is there, I should do this in a different order, but we have the annual town meeting coming up at the end of the month, and there's a couple of pro forma pieces of business that we need to put on there. There are standard extension of the voting hours. Well, that's the first thing, so. Can I have a motion to forward I, uh, the resolution setting referendum hours to town meeting?
Move to forward the resolution setting referendum hours for calendar year twenty twenty-four pursuant to CGS seven dash nine B to town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, we also have a resolution authorizing the first selectman and the finance director treasurer to borrow on behalf of the town from time to time. May I have a motion?
Move to forward the resolution authorizing the first selectman and treasurer to borrow on behalf of the town to town meeting.
There are second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then the resolution to accept grants from the Department of Transportation for grant aid.
I'll move to forward the resolution authorizing the first selectman to enter into agreements with the Connecticut Department of Transportation to town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We are required to have our annual town meeting in the month of December. We, as a major part of that, we are to accept the annual report of the departments of the town and financial documents. We use CCM as our printer for that, and the expectation is that that won't be ready until probably the middle of the week before Christmas. So just to be safe, what I'd like to do is use the December twenty-eighth evening to have our annual town meeting. That, that way, we can make sure that we have the financial documents again, so we don't have to. Does that date work?
Yes.
Yeah.
That might not be here, but works for everybody else.
I have a motion to set December twenty-eighth as the annual town meeting date.
Move to set the annual town meeting date for December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Second, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Tower Hopper. So you guys should have gotten, uh, by email yesterday, the recommendation from the architect on the community center project that was accepted by the building committee. Does anybody need a copy? Or a copy? Okay, so the architect has reviewed the bids. We, we got nine of them, eight of which were under budget. The building committee has made a recommendation based on memorandum from the architect. USDA had affirmed the recommendation. So the last step to award the bid is acceptance of the recommendation by the Board of Selectmen and authorization for my signature. Anything you want to add here?
Building committee is building commission.
Permanent Building Commission, sorry, it's called, I don't, anything you'd like to add?
Other than the USDA seems to be running the show. We're just following behind and trying to keep up with them.
Do as they say.
Yes, so, and they were happy with the packet we sent them. We did basically everything they asked of us. And it was like, okay, we like the award letter that, or the, the notice to award. It's actually their form. They said, go ahead, and we're good, award it. So then our next step will be about a, I don't know, forty-page contract and stipulations and AIA documents and to get the builder to start working on, filling his part out. The architect's already working on it. And then we'll submit that to USDA and get their approval for that, and then we'll start a pre-construction meeting and then move on from there.
But, yeah, so I was at the permanent building commission meeting. I heard the, the comments that there's a, there's a, there were a cluster of other bids that were, um, that were higher than this bid by a pretty significant amount. And, um, they were creating two or three hundred thousand dollars, right? And so, yeah, so I just had a question. So the, um, the basement was removed from the, um, from the proposal because it was reported that their, like, water table is now three to four feet below grade.
No, the, that's a misconception. It's not the water tables three to four feet. Modeling showed, so sometime in the last hundred years, the water has been all the way up to three feet and then all the way down. We put a standpipe in and we monitored the water all last year, and it stayed roughly about seven, eight feet below. But because the water's a big concern over there because of the soils and everything, the the scout hall committee kind of said, you know, basement's gonna be probably out of the picture because it's wet. That's when we hired a boring company to come in and soil scientists to test the soil. And then before the bids were due, we notified, we had the architect redo the plans and we notified all the bidders that we're going with frost walls instead of full basement. Because it will turn into a maintenance nightmare with some pumps and water damage and mold, and it's not working. So.
So the addendum, the town published the addendums for the bidding, that's what you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
And on, on the addendum number three, it says that the current basement design will be removed due to an unusually high water table of approximately four, three to four people over the, it's below top of existing, as identified in the Geotech report. Okay, so it must be, that sounds like.
There is a report.
Right, okay. So the question I had was, do we, do we know that the bidder that was recommended by the architect has addressed the water table issues in his pricing or their pricing to ensure that the, uh, that they're, that they're.
So if you read further, when, in the packet that you received, the bill, the, the bidder had to acknowledge he received every single addendum.
Understood.
And it's never, so he is fully aware of the situation.
So we're not gonna get a, we won't get a price increase from the bidder, came in quite a bit lower saying, hey, guys, listen, the water tables are usually high and we need to do specific things regarding to the frost walls and the, and the rest because we're gonna hold him accountable to it because he's aware of it.
He's aware, it's in the signed contracts. He's, he's, he submitted in his bid that he was aware of all of the addendums.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You see, attachment B, right? You read it?
I did.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure we don't get stuck with a three or four, five hundred thousand dollar cost overrun because when you build foundations and water tables and frost issues, you have to do special engineering, what I read. And I just wanna make sure the, it's built into the price, that's all.
Any else?
No.
Did you have a question on, uh, had, see subcontractors, were all those contractors vetted?
Both are his, those, that's his list.
I understand it's his list, but have we vetted?
We don't vet.
We don't vet subcontractors list.
He's responsible. We vet him. He's one hundred percent responsible. If he hires them, if they don't do the job properly, it's all on him.
And that would have come out in the reference checks that were done, the reference checks on the company that's done.
I just wanted to make sure that there was some kind of follow-through on that, just because we know in the past we've had a subcontractor that might have been questioned wrong. Okay.
Other questions or comments? Then I, I think a motion was being ordered.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the permanent building committee as reviewed by the USDA RD. Second, and authorize.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion?
Yeah, I said committee, but. Oh, what did I say? Commissioner, committee?
You said committee, but it's a commission.
Sorry.
No, scriven is error. Motion has been made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Make a motion to authorize the signature of the first selectman on the notice of award, the final contract documentation, and all of the documentation as necessary to commence work on the community seven project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, sir?
You have the final draft?
I do now, no. No, I've already, it's all the market up. Um, all right. Um, tax refunds.
Move to approve the tax refunds totaling two thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars and forty-three cents.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, public participation. This is the second opportunity for the public to address the members of the board. Same rules as before. I'll first turn to people who are here in the room, ask if anybody would like to address the board. State your name and your address, and state your business, and then I'll provide the same opportunity to anybody who's with us online. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board of selectmen? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
South Townley, twenty-three Race Road. I just don't know where we stand on the demolition of the mill. I know it went out for public, I didn't see anything further than that.
That's the last item of it, too. They got a permanent wetlands, and I think they have to go to, did they go to, yeah, they gotta go to, um, I think it's only, don't they?
That was a new page, that was the building, I think. Was the building part of it.
The objection was filed. So now it's under the demolition delay ordinance. Forty-five days. Under the demolition delay ordinance based on the fact that I'm filing.
Well, the judge.
I filed a.
You filed it?
File an objection, yeah.
For what purpose?
To delay the demolition of the historic mill.
Yeah. I understand, but what?
So, so like, this is public participation. Let's keep the, the discussion focused on where the public is. So, is there anybody, any other comments from the members of, of the public? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Bill Wallace, forty-four Miller's Road. I'm glad you took up that water problem over there at East Scott Hall. I wanted to go with you and the, uh, Water Pollution Control Committee over there and everything else. It was a real problem, and I went over there a few times. All the way we had the I-race left work. I mean, that back park come out was wet. So, glad to take my, right?
Thank you, sir. Other comments from the public? Is there anyone online who would like to address the members of the board of selectmen? If so, please state your name and your address and state your business. Okay. Um, we will have an executive session. It will include the five members of the board. Attorney Brian McCann and attorney Bobbi Prizenzio, I think just pulled in. So I'd like a motion to go into executive session, please.
Motion to go into executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are in executive session at eight, oh, P M. Action will follow. It is ten o'clock. We're out of executive session. We're gonna take up the regular call of the agenda, agenda item A, B. Uh, discussion of possible ratification of the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Public Works Union. Is there a motion?
Um, I move to ratify the agreement between the town of East Windsor and local thirteen zero three dash one six six of Connecticut Council number four. Um, ABSME, AFL, CIO, and authorize and signature of the first selectman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries three to one. Agenda item F.
Move to postpone agenda item A, F until our next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Carries man. With no further business come before the board of selectmen, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move that we adjourn at ten oh one P M.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor of adjourned, say aye?
Aye.
Said leave it.
We are adjourned at ten oh two.